Live from the city building in Athens, Ohio, your local source for live city meetings. TGC 15 presents Athens City Council.
Welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is Monday, July 7, 2008. It's on or about 7:00 p.m. And this evening, before our regular session of council, there will be a finance and personnel committee chaired by committee member Jim Sands.
Mr. President, I'm going to ask our auditor Kathy Hecton and Mayor Paul Wile to help me with some of these. You have in front of you agendas with some of the things we're going to talk about. First one is a community corrections grant, which is a grant that the Community Corrections Court has been receiving for a good number of years, but it runs from July to July. And so we can only appropriate six months at a time, and their appropriation is running out, has run out. It ran out first of July, so they need some money appropriated for their grant. This is money that will be replaced with the grant funds. They're needing $36,000 to their personnel line and $1,000 to their transaction class 200 is...
Supplies.
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 Big words, supplies. Okay. So a total of $37,000 in appropriations for community correction grant. What we're going to do to deal with this, what we're going to propose doing, is amending the very first ordinance on the agenda for second reading, ordinance 7108, which is an appropriation ordinance. Right now, it has $25,000 for county auditor and county treasurer fees that we talked about in an earlier committee meeting, $5,000 to other admin to purchase a generator for backup for the emergency communication system, $15,000 to the police department to purchase uniforms for the new police officers who will soon be coming online, and $34,000 to the street rehab fund to pay for the design engineering costs for the slip on Grohlner Street. We're going to add to that this community corrections grant, and then I'm going to ask suspension on that because this is a payroll issue that the court needs to be able to leave the people. Any questions? Did I get that?
No, that's exactly right. There's someone fairly new in that position, and my office actually found it and asked them, you know, we needed their budget, what their grant letter was awarding them, and I just was made aware of this about a week ago. So I let people know as soon as I found out. But we need it suspended so they can meet payroll. You know, they don't need to buy anything else that could wait, but we do need to meet the payroll.
Okay, thank you. And the next item is discussion of a bucket truck. I understand that the city has two bucket trucks, and one of them had a fairly disastrous fire recently.
One caught fire, I forget the date, was it 23rd of last month? 23rd of June there. Basically caught fire and is pretty much totaled out. It's as small, the two bucket trucks, we have two bucket trucks, I guess two large ones when you get down to it. What we need to do is we need to, a couple of things will happen. One is we're thinking about trying to trade in both of them in, well, one's totaled. We'll talk to Andy Stone earlier today, and we can only get about, I think 8,000 is what the insurance company is going to give us, a thousand deductible. This is the '91 bucket truck, 1991. We're hoping to get another one for about 60,000. We would like to try, if you look at your appropriation ordinance number 8908, the idea there is that we will try trading in the newer of the two with the idea as well to be trading that one in and get one bucket truck that will fit both functions. The reason why we have two is one's good for height, the other one's good for mobility in terms of getting underneath the street traffic lights. So the cause of the fire, according to the speculation or the assessment of the fire department, it was caused by the lens of the traffic lights that were in the truck. And so it's been sitting there for a couple of days, and all of a sudden it just caught fire. So you've got to watch those lenses. So we'd like to actually suspend on that so we can get it moving, so we can get a bucket truck up and running. It's hard to change some of the lighting and some of the banners with the truck we have right now. It doesn't fit under the wires. Questions?
So we won't trade it in until we get the new one if it takes a little bit longer?
What do you mean?
But you're going to use the other one until the bitter end and then, the one that's working, operational?
It doesn't fit all uses. We'd like to trade-
No, no, that isn't what I was asking.
Okay.
I just was wondering, you know, if it's, okay, I appreciate going to one truck anyway, so when all of a sudden done, that's better than two.
Well, we're calling a fleet. I think that's the term that-
I think that's a term that you've heard from me before.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Any other questions about this particular issue? Okay. And then another item, University Courtyard pump upgrade.
This, I'm not really sure much about it. I received an email from Crystal, and I guess the dialogue that's been going on is the amount of noise created by the pump on University Courtyard. It's above 70 decibels. And I guess the dialogue was, is to get a new upgrade on this. I'm not ready to go forward with this. As far as I know, it's not in your ordinances right now. I bring it forward because they're talking about maybe 16,000 for an upgrade. I need to find out more information on it. I'm just letting you guys know. And again, I think it has to do with just improving the noise pollution of it more than anything else, if I understand correctly. It may be a true performance difference as well.
So again, this is just-
Heads up.
For your information. We'll have a fuller discussion later on.
Is it a pump at the Richland Avenue area to pump the water up to University Courtyard?
That's the way I understand it.
We certainly did not get the Kerry Chill pumps for anything closely approximating that. That was more like a quarter of a million, wasn't it Nancy, or some outrageous amount?
This may be sound suppression systems, probably, no? I got the impression it's not so much a replacement, but just, you know, some kind of containment or baffling system.
We've heard from property owners in the area that have difficulty retaining tenants because of the noise level when it kicks on, so.
Okay.
They haven't reported us yet to the police.
Where, this is, is this at the Richland Avenue entrance?
I believe so.
Okay, more to come.
Okay.
And then the auditor just spoke to me a moment ago about appropriations to the transportation fund.
How come it's written on here?
Auditor Hecton, you want to talk about that? Included in ordinance 8608.
Oh, 8608. Well, I just noticed, I actually was out of town this weekend, just got back today, and so just went into my office a little while ago to look at emails and stuff, and I noticed on this ordinance that on 86 at the bottom, it has 20,000 appropriated to the transportation fund for the pass-through for Lakefront Lines, and we actually need more like 23,000, 24,000. I was just wondering if you could bump that up a little bit. That was kind of rounded off, and, you know, I'm not sure why I just would set it 20. We need 22,308 to be exact, although I don't usually like to cut it that close. So I'd like it to be 23 or 24 instead of 20.
If we're going to amend, we'd like it to be 23 or 24.
24, I think Ray would like. I said 23, so go with 24?
It's a pass-through anyway.
Right, it is, it is. Yeah, it's, yeah, actually, that one is for the new buses, that part of it.
No, the other one.
Or is that, no, okay, yeah.
That's pretty quick.
Oh, you're right. Okay, sorry, yeah, it is. That's pass-through, and so we just want to play it safe with that.
Other items on this 86-
Sorry, too many transportation grants.
Other items on this include $16,000 to the general fund in the mayor's office for advertising and judgment costs. Advertising, anytime we have jobs open, they have to be advertised, special meetings, public hearings, advertising. Their budget for the year is almost at zero now, so they do need this additional appropriation.
We've spent a year for it, and it's July?
Yes. Most of it has to do with, basically, jobs, most of it's jobs, otherwise you say, public hearings, announcements that have to be put out. And if you look, some of that is actually going to go into judgment as well. We've had several cases where we have jobbed out some of the legal stuff, and that's where the judgments come from.
And so judgments can include hiring, extra legal help outside of the large office. So I would point out that a lot of those cases were ongoing, coming into this year.
Yes. And if you look further down there, the combination appraisals, that's coming out of the code office funds, the 200, 300. Normally, that's for the grass mowing and any types of fees that go to cleaning up yards. What I've tried doing was getting some houses condemned. We have a few houses that are derelict, and I want to start that forward. It requires an appraisal from an engineer to appraise the house. The next 4,000 is for a general fund going into code for a hybrid vehicle. They have a budget of about 20,000 at this point, but a hybrid vehicle is going to cost a little bit more. The feeling is we'll put one or two in the fleet at this point, so we'll see how they 41 for the transportation, fuel charges. Again, as you know, fuel's going up. We've increased the amount of hours we're running as well in terms of McDonald's. So that covers that section of monies to be spent to move there. And I suspect this should be moved faster than slower. Do you think we need suspension?
We had discussed it, leaving it for-
Well, most of these were discussed at, you know, at a previous committee meeting, actually, and so I don't know how council feels about that, but, you know, they're waiting to purchase a vehicle and co. You know, it'd be nice at this point in the year to move along with business, but that's up to council. And the mayor, if you have any recommendation, I don't know how you feel about that.
I'd say suspend it.
I guess it has to be suspended at some point. We're going to pass it before recess.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
And let's, since we're on to, are we on to miscellaneous?
Yeah. Are you moving on to the next 87?
Yeah, why not?
We're going to, I was going to talk about the buses here.
Okay.
We had talked about in earlier committee meeting that we have two buses which are going to be replaced. They're old, they're outdated, they need replacements. We have to declare those excess baggage, excess-
Surplus, maybe?
Surplus. I'm happy to come with my notes. And the value suggested is about $3,000 for the two of them. So that's an ordinance that we need to pass through. And another separate ordinance, 8808, deals with the purchase of the two new buses. And notice that this is amending an earlier ordinance. The price has changed. This is a grant-funded purchase, but originally, we thought we had to expend $10,000. It looks like we're going to have to expend about $34,000 for the two buses. And those two, I did already, I had already planned on asking for suspension on those two.
Yes, please. We'll need that. Most of us have time sticking on the buses. They're waiting for a PO to run at this point.
We thought that this whole purchase was further along, but because the purchase order had been written incorrectly, not from the auditor's office-
No.
-that we need to suspend to catch up on some time. So the buses will be here in time for the busy season.
I hate to ask the obvious, but where do you find two buses for 34,000?
It's actually closer to 113,000.
Okay.
But as I say, most of the money was already put forward in terms of the grant.
Okay.
Each bus is about 56,000 and changed. We have two different versions of it, one with a certain type of suspension, one without. What you're seeing is a PO is written for one bus along the way, and as a result, the money started moving around where, you know, and it didn't stay in one place. So we've proceeded to try getting this expedited because the buses actually, the order's been put in, specs have been put in, but they're waiting for a number, a PO number.
Thank you.
Okay, I think that covers the issues we want to deal with before this meeting. Any questions? Some of the finance issues we're going to discuss later.
Well, you've got 14 more minutes before regular session of council.
We can recess. Well, I'm adjourned, yes.
Okay.
So we'll see you back at 7:30? Good evening. Welcome back to Athens City Council. Again, it's Monday, July 7, 2008, and city council this evening is meeting in regular session. It's on or about 7:30 p.m. We do have a quorum with all members of council present. Do I have a motion for disposition of minutes from the meeting regular session held June 16, 2008?
Second.
Motion and second. Is there further discussion? All those in favor of accepting the minutes?
Aye.
Opposed, the minutes have been accepted. Communications. I really have no communications myself to share with council. Are there any other communications that any council member would like to share? And we'll go on to reports and communications from elected officials. Mayor Wile.
Couple of communications. One is I have some vacancies on the zoning board of appeals, one alternate, one regular. I also received an email from Mike Cooper and the wellhead protection concerning some of the parking on the grass on West State Street. They did evaluation, and I felt that there wasn't, the presence of cars was not a problem for the wellhead, and they did not see any reason to engage Egon and Associates in evaluating that situation. I could pass the email along to you if you want. Those are the only two things I really have. And I, and yes, you saw the new bike lane that's on Congress. All the signage is not done yet, so just be aware that it's a work in progress.
I also on, let's see, Congress, going down towards Stimson, you can turn right, you can turn left, but you can't go straight. If we get that arrow put back in, I was in a car that somebody jumped all over the place trying to figure out which, they thought the lanes were being changed. Am I the only one that noticed that? You noticed it too?
Congress going down to-
Carpenter.
Carpenter, I'm sorry. Carpenter going down to Stimson.
Carpenter going down to Stimson, okay.
Right there, as you come up on State Street, you've got a left and a right arrow, but no straight arrow, I noticed, so.
Okay.
Kind of disconcerting.
I hope they have the presence of mind to follow there.
Is that all, Paul?
Yes, that is.
Thank you. Kathy Hecton.
Yes, I do have a few things tonight. One thing I wanted to let council know that the ordinance you passed that would have allowed me to advance funds from the general fund to the sewer debt fund if need be to make our loan payment that's due Wednesday, was not necessary. Our receipts came in in the utilities billing department, and so we did not have to do any of that. Just thought I'd let you know about that, but thank you for-
I remember you said that was a possibility. How close was it?
Right. Well, not that close. Actually, we did better than we thought.
Good.
So, you know, it's an educated guess, and things go up and down, but no, it wasn't as close as we were afraid. So that's a good thing. But to be honest, I can't give you a number right now. We haven't closed out June, so that's, but we do know there's enough money in there, so. And a couple of other things. One is I wanted to thank Law Director Lang for approaching me about collection, prosecution of delinquent income taxes for the city. We have met, and he's assigned his prosecutor, Tracy Meeks, in his office to help us with that, and we have been working with her. She's going to spend one day at a tax conference that our other tax administrators are going to this week to better understand what we are doing as far as our income tax collections go. Once that appeared in the newspaper, we, within two weeks, we collected $20,000 in delinquent taxes, penalties, and interest, and got commitments for another 20,000. So 40,000 in two weeks, and then it's, you know, it's plucked off a little bit since then, but we still are hearing from people who are, you know, afraid of the law director, I guess. So that's a good thing. So I wanted everybody to know about that. We were a little bit surprised, to be honest, but, you know, pleasantly surprised. So that's where we are on that. Thank you again, Pat. And this is sort of personal, but it has to do with the city as far as all the environment and green efforts that people are talking about. We always try in our office, since I got in there, we started recycling in our office, and it's a small office, so we're limited in what we can do, but we did start talking at our staff meetings. Ray and I are the only ones who actually live in the city, and some of the other employees live farther away and drive back and forth. So now we have two employees who are going to try to work four-10s, so they're not driving back and forth so much. You know, one drives over 30 minutes a day each way, and the other one is close to that. So one is starting this week, and one is starting in about two weeks. So we'll have two employees working four-10s rather than driving five days a week. I just thought you might like to know, especially Alahu, but anyway. Which, it's a good thing, you know, that's why I'm, you know, supportive. We threw it out there, and that's where we are. So I think that's it for me.
Paul, did I see you had something else?
Yeah, there's been some discussion for the street department to do the same thing. I think Andy was bringing it up. Actually, we discussed it starting July 1, but I never heard one way or the other, so I don't know if he reached consensus with all his employees and all his crews at that time. But that's, it is a possibility, cuts down on travel.
Paul Director.
Mr. President, I do have to take one quick second just to brag on my staff a little bit. One of our young prosecutors in my office, who you had the opportunity to meet a few weeks ago, James Stanley, did have his first jury trial last week, and while the verdict didn't work out the way he would have liked, we're all real proud of James.
Very good. Very good. Our first readings are for second readings, ordinances for second readings. 07108, an ordinance amending the 2008 appropriation ordinance. Member Sands.
Mr. President, I move that we amend ordinance 7108 at this time.
Second.
We, I move that we amend, to add this language, appropriating from the unappropriate balance the following sums. $36,000 to the Community Corrections Grant Fund, 235, transaction class 100, which is personnel costs, to cover the grant awarded effective July 1, and $1,000 to the Community Corrections Grant, 235, transaction class 200, which is supplies, total of $37,000. As we discussed in committee, this is to, will be reimbursed by grant funds. The Community Corrections Court has committed to them, but their grant runs from July to July instead of January to January, as our budget does, so we have to do this. And I move that amendment.
Motion and second to amend ordinance 71 as stated. Is there further discussion on the amendment only? All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Opposed, the amendment has been, 071 has been amended and read for the first time.
Mr. President, at this time, I move that we consider ordinance 7108 under suspension of the rules.
Second.
As, again, as we discussed in committee just a few moments ago, this $36,000 that we've added to this ordinance is to cover personnel funds, and salaries are actually due in July for this court, so we need to move this along so that they can make their payroll.
Motion and a second to consider ordinance 71 under suspension of council rules. Is there further discussion on suspension only? All those in favor of suspension of the rules?
Aye.
Opposed, the rules are suspended.
Mr. President, finally, I move adoption of ordinance 7108.
Second.
There's an echo in this room, for all the reasons stated, I would guess. Is there further discussion on ordinance 71? All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance?
Aye.
Opposed, the ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 7408, an ordinance authorizing the payment of service credit to the Ohio Police and Fire Pension Fund. Bill?
Mr. President, I move adoption of 07408.
That's second reading.
Oh, sorry.
Do you want to suspend?
No, I have all my notes ready. I could talk about it now, but I'll wait till next week.
Or maybe even two weeks from now.
Yep.
Member Wile. Mayor Wile.
I'll get this in later.
Even a bad joke at this point.
I would like to say I'm not really in favor of this ordinance, mostly because it actually sways into the area of administration, resident legislation. I consider this really trying to fix a problem which was unfair, but has been fixed. I understand that he does miss out on pension, but at the same time, he had a chance to buy that pension. I know that he, the union did not go and go to bat for him on this, so therefore, I look at this as a little bit unnecessary, and I worry about what the effects will be further down the line with other, other members. And so therefore, I'm not in favor of this at all.
Is there further discussion? Member Bain.
Well, Mayor Wile, I'm really sorry that you missed the discussion that we had because many of these ideas were ventilated. The fact is that James was denied something that subsequent back injuries have been allowed, and the contract is silent on it, and I am putting it up just for absolute fairness. It's my crusader rabbit instinct going, and I think that we will not be setting a precedent unless we revert to no, even though a person is certified, no light duty. Heaven knows, we could send all of the firemen up and down Court Street in their spare time inspecting the bars, but somehow, the last administration, not yours, but this previous one, couldn't see that as an option, so.
But at the same time, what we're seeing here is that this, this option is going to, one, chew up a little bit of the fund, present day fund, not the past administration funds.
Right.
Two, it will actually negotiate for an individual that's a union member, and therefore adding a little bit of a mix to the union agreements that we have.
The contract at this point is silent on this issue.
The contract is silent, and that's it, and you're not.
Right, exactly right.
Okay.
Because your personnel director told him that he had to come to council to get it.
Let's ask for the comments to be made to the chair, and let's look for recognition.
What?
I always need, I'll need to start my-
I don't mind a slight colloquy, but we're not going to get into a one-on-one argument here, which is not going to do it that way.
Okay, we'll have it next week.
We can next week, yes.
Or the week after.
Okay. Is there further discussion? On the ordinance 7508, an ordinance amending ordinance 01208, structural repairs to the Columbus Road Fire Station. Member Coon.
Mr. President, I move to consider ordinance 07508 under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Thank you. The reason for doing this under suspension of the rules is that time is of the essence. We need to get those structural repairs to the fire department done as soon as possible, and it's my understanding that the service safety director cannot sign the contract for an amount that has not been appropriated, and that's the reason for suspension of the rules.
Is there further discussion on suspension only?
Actually, considering the need for this, is it necessary for an emergency clause? That's the other question I would have. Again, my concern is, again, the timeliness of this and the consideration, it is, the construction season is, window is so big.
I would ask that if you are willing to propose that, that we withdraw the request for suspension, ask for an emergency clause amendment, and we'll go through the-
The suspension?
Yes. If you will withdraw the motion, and your second will withdraw the second.
Mr. President, I withdraw my motion for consideration of that ordinance under suspension of the rules.
And I would entertain, if you wish to propose a motion for an emergency clause to be added.
I move that we add an emergency clause to this ordinance.
Second. And it should say that this sudden measure is necessary to protect the public health and safety of the citizens of Athens.
And I think that- And I think that that certainly meets the requirement there. Just for any new council members, an emergency clause will allow it to be taken place immediately upon passage and the mayor's signature, instead of it having to wait for the usual 30 days and requires five-member vote. Is there further discussion on the amendment only? All those in favor of amending to add the emergency clause to ordinance 7508?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been amended and read for the first time.
Mr. President, I move to adopt ordinance—
To consider it under suspension of the rules.
Oh, to consider—
I'm sorry, there, we have to do it this way.
I forgot. Mr. President, I move to consider ordinance O-7508 under suspension of the rules.
Second.
For the reasons that I stated previously.
Yes. Is there further discussion on suspension only? All those in favor of suspending the rules on ordinance 7508?
Aye.
Opposed? The rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, I move to adopt ordinance O-7508.
Second.
Thank you. This is an ordinance amending ordinance O-1208 to increase the appropriated amount to $63,700, as it's my understanding there were no bids for the lower amount, and so the appropriation needs to be increased so that we can get a signed contract and get these repairs done.
Is there further discussion on adoption? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 7508?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 7608, an ordinance authorizing design engineering of Richland 682, project number 230. Member, oh, sorry. Surely, you would like to discuss your ordinance. Everybody else wants to discuss theirs tonight. Ordinance 7708, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application to participate in the 2009 state capital improvements and/or local transportation improvement program for issue one funds and to execute contracts as required. Ordinance 7808, I'm sorry. I was not made aware that we needed suspension on this one. Is there, the clerk is informing me that Andy had requested this be suspended.
Seventy-seven.
Seventy-seven. Is that the September, September 1?
Is it a September 1?
I thought it was September 1 day.
Well, we're okay. We're okay. Thank you, though. Ordinance 7808, an ordinance amending the Athens City Code Title 29 Housing Regulations, Chapter 29.12 Premises Conditions, Chapter 29.37 Definitions, and Title 99 Definitions as used in the Athens City Code. Ordinance 7908 is an ordinance banning parking and closing that portion of Court Street from Mallberry to Carpenter on November 1st and 2nd, '08, in anticipation of a large number of people converging on downtown Athens Halloween weekend. Ordinance 8008 is an ordinance establishing a glass-free drinking container zone on Court Street and adjoining sidewalks between Union and State Street on November 1st and 2nd, '08, again, Halloween weekend. Ordinance 8108 is an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Chapter 11.04, Vending Peddling and Soliciting, to allow vending in a designated area on November 1st and 2nd, '08, again, Halloween weekend. An ordinance 8208 is an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Section 13.04.10, Unnecessary Noise in the Downtown Area, on November 1st and 2nd, '08, Halloween weekend. Mayor Wild.
We did get a call to mayor's office asking when Halloween was, so—
From whose office?
My office, from somebody out of town. Just so you know.
It's never too early to discuss Halloween.
Never too early to start a costume.
Under ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 8308 is an ordinance granting a variance from the Athens City subdivision regulations to John Rinaldi for property located outside the corporate limits but within the three-mile jurisdiction to allow a minor lot split. Member Phillips.
Mr. President, this ordinance is based on a recommendation we received from the Planning Commission to grant this variance. It's really a slight variance from the square footage required in an area where there's no curb and gutter for purposes of stormwater control. It's, they're pretty much in keeping with the other lots in the neighborhood, and Mr. Rinaldi, if he has said that he isn't planning to do any further splits, if he did, they would, of course, have to come back through the Planning Commission. So, it's really just a small variance.
Further discussion? Ordinance 8408 is an ordinance granting variances from the Athens City subdivision regulations to David Hoysington for property located outside the corporate limit but within the three-mile jurisdiction to allow a minor lot split. Again, member Phillips.
Mr. President, this, again, comes to us on a unanimous recommendation from the Planning Commission. This will actually reduce an existing nonconformity. There are currently three lots that are nonconforming. This will create two lots that are still nonconforming, but they'll be slightly larger than the three.
Further discussion? Ordinance 8508 is an ordinance amending the Athens City Code Title 23 Zoning Code, Chapter 23.04, permitted uses in the B3 general business zone. Again, member Phillips.
Mr. President, we did discuss this in committee previously. We have a recommendation from the Planning Commission to revert back to some language that used to be in the code for restaurants in a B3 zone. This does not have anything to do with the conversation about noise. This is only about distance from an R1 and an R2, where the language currently in the B3 is more restrictive than in a B1 or a B2. So, this takes it back to the way it was before, and that 200-foot distance requirement is only if there's a drive-in or a drive-through. I would note that we've got a little clerical error there that we're going to spell through in the standard way, rather than the shortened way that you may see on drive-through signs.
Member Sands.
Oh, okay. Drive-through eating and drinking places, so the drive-through applies to both of those.
Yeah.
Okay, I understand. Never mind.
Is there further discussion?
There should be a—
Mayor Wild, I'm sorry.
Oh, should be a public hearing scheduled for this, I assume? Have you given it planned?
We'll set that when we do announcements in other business. We'll schedule a hearing.
Under ordinance 8608, which is an ordinance amending the 2008 appropriation ordinance. Member Sands.
Mr. President, first, I'd like to move that we amend ordinance 8608. The auditor has asked us to amend the last section of this ordinance, which is appropriating 20, now it says appropriating $20,000 to the transportation fund. The auditor recommends that we amend that to read $24,000 to the appropriation, to the transportation fund, I'm sorry.
Motion and second to amend ordinance 86 as stated. Further discussion on amendment only? All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance 8708 has been amended and read for the first time.
Mr. President—
Did you need that adopted?
When you just talked about this, did you not ask?
Yes, we would like to schedule.
Yes, of course.
Not necessarily for that one, but really several of them—
Advertising judgments.
Advertising judgments and the buses. Or the fuel, I mean, for the bus.
Mr. President, I move that we consider ordinance 8608 under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion and second.
For the reasons that the auditor mentioned and the mayor mentioned, one of the appropriations is $16,000 to the General Fund for Advertising and Judgments. This line at this time is almost zeroed out from the appropriation that was made earlier this year, so we need to add to that. And $41,000 to the Transportation Fund for payment of fuel charges to Ohio University. The Athens Transit, fuel usage is repaid to us by McDonald Transit, with whom we have a contract, so we have to expend the money, but we'll get it back. And this is a bill that is under suspension.
Is there further discussion on suspension only? All those in favor of suspending council rules on ordinance 86?
Aye.
Opposed? The rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance 8608.
Second.
We've already talked about most of this. This ordinance also has an appropriation of $500 to the Code Office, the General Fund, for condemnation appraisal costs. There are several buildings within the city that we have had requests to condemn, but there are certain appraisal costs that we have to upfront first, and there's no money in that line, so we need to appropriate some. This asks for appropriation of $4,000, again, to the code area to allow them to purchase a hybrid vehicle. They're, they have, they have researched this and found that they need to expend about $24,000 for a hybrid vehicle. They have $20,000 in their capital fund, but they need an additional four to make this purchase. This is something we've been encouraging departments to do, so we should probably support this. And I think we've talked about the others.
Is there further discussion on adoption of ordinance 86? All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 8708, an ordinance declaring certain vehicles no longer needed for municipal purposes. Member Sands, again.
Mr. President, this ordinance declares two of our buses as no longer needed for municipal purpose, and we release them to be sold or go to auction. We're putting a minimum bid of $3,000 on the pair of them.
Actually, I think it's $3,000 each.
Was it $3,000 each?
I think that's a—
Okay, I'm sorry.
I think the estimated cost, if you just scrap it out for tons.
It's $3,000 each?
Yeah, I believe so.
So, $3,000 for each bus, total of $6,000, I'm sorry. I misread that.
We'll try putting it, I've given a task to somebody to look it up and see if we can put this online as a bid, see if we can get a wider range, but if not, you can drag it to, you know, the McDonald's transport guy says you can drag it to McGee and get this much money just to scrap. Hopefully, we can do more better than that.
Are they, in such condition, they need to be dragged?
No, I think one can drive. I think the other one's got a bad transmission, may need. I imagine they get—
One can drive the other?
Yeah, maybe. These are those red buses you saw driving up and down Courtyard for a couple of years. We bought them used, and they've gotten a lot of use.
Are those the ones that used to say Rocky Mountain National Park on them?
No, that was actually a loaner. That's the white one that we had. That's, that's—
You are still driving that?
Yes. Once we get the two new buses, we'll give it back to McDonald on that one. That's a lease, actually. We don't own that one.
Okay. Is there further discussion on ordinance 87? Ordinance 8808, an ordinance amending ordinance O-0708, authorizing the replacement of two buses for the Athens Transit System. And member Sands.
Mr. President, yes, mayor.
I think, oh, we need an emergency clause in that?
For 88?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. President, I move that we amend ordinance 8808 to include an emergency clause.
Do we have a second?
Second.
This ordinance is actually amending a previous ordinance that was for the purchase of two buses. We need to increase the appropriation. That's our amendment. That's the change to this ordinance, and it needs to go in effect quickly so these buses can be expedited, the purchase can be expedited.
Is there further discussion on the amendment only? All those in favor of amending ordinance 8808?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been amended and read for the first time.
Mr. President, at this time, then, I ask that we consider ordinance 8808 in its amended form under suspension of the rules.
I was thinking I had heard that emergency clause was needed.
I thought we did that, didn't I? Did I skip that part?
No, I'm sorry. I thought you were changing the amount. It's too much, I'm losing it. Okay.
Okay.
It is what it is.
Where are we now?
We're up to suspending—
You're suspending the rules, and I second it.
Okay, it's been seconded. A purchase order was written for these two buses early in the year. Notice this is ordinance O-708, so it was early this year. But that purchase order was inadequate. It wasn't, didn't reflect the true cost of the bus, which we have recently, very recently discovered is, would be $34,000 for the two of them. Again, this is, as the mayor pointed out in discussion with the president, this is grant funding that we will be reimbursed, but first of all, we have to make the expenditure. So, this is the amendment that I'm making to this ordinance. This is the, I'm asking that we—
Suspend—
Suspend the ordinance for this reason.
That you have already amended at first reading, by the way. Is there further discussion on suspension only? I guess not. All those in favor of suspending the rules on 8808?
Aye.
Opposed? The rules are suspended.
And finally, Mr. President, I move that we adopt ordinance 8808.
Second.
For all the reasons we've discussed.
Is there further discussion?
Mr. President—
Can you believe it?
I just want to make sure that it's understood that even though we had to do a bunch of jumping around today, we ask for this because we wanted to make sure, if it was possible to get more than $3,000, that we not waste the people's money. So, it may seem like it's a little convoluted, but it is a way to try and see if anybody wants those little buses.
Okay.
So, I'm applauding you for doing it, Jim.
There's your balls.
He doesn't care.
Take it where you can get it.
Same.
See, we've got a motion and a second to adopt. Is there further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 8808?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted, too. Ordinance 8908 is an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a bucket truck, declaring two bucket trucks no longer needed for a municipal purpose and declaring an emergency. You won't have to add that. Again, member Sands.
No, thank goodness we didn't have to add that. But I would ask that we consider ordinance 8908 under suspension of the rules.
Second.
As it's noted in here, the city at this point owns two bucket trucks. One of them was, was involved in a fire, which has pretty much totally decommissioned it. We've had a bucket truck with a short boom, and one with a large boom for different jobs. What we would like to do is move to a single bucket truck that could be used for all the jobs in the city. And the Service Safety Director has costed this out. It should be, we should be able to get one for about $60,000. We need to appropriate $20,000 to the street fund and able to allow that $60,000 balance to be built up, and then we authorize this Service Safety Director to expend those funds from the street fund. There will be some insurance money involved from the bucket truck that burned, and we hope there'll be some cost savings that from, and I forgot the last part. We declare the two bucket trucks as no longer needed for municipal purpose, so they also can be auctioned off, and hopefully, there'll be some funds from that.
If you look at the wording, it's such that we will either auction it or try to trade in, depending which will work better. Again, Andy said, has a certain price range, and he's pretty conservative, of the $25,000 for the 97 bucket truck, so we'll see what happens. And again, that money will go back into his fund, so hopefully, it'll be just a wash when it gets done. It would be down one truck.
Motion and a second to consider ordinance 8908 under suspension of council rules. Is there further discussion on suspension on, like you said, and— All those in favor of suspending the rules?
Aye.
Opposed? The rules have been suspended.
Okay. Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance 8908.
Second.
As I forgot to say in my explanation of why we need to suspend the rules, we, the bucket truck that was involved in the fire is the— truck that was, that was involved in the fire is the truck that's used to service the streetlights in the city, and at this current time, the streetlights, the stop traffic signals, and the city-owned streetlights can't be serviced, so we need to follow this procedure and get back to one truck that is working and can handle all of our needs.
Further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance eighty-nine oh eight?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. On denouncements and other businesses? Member Phillips?
I need a planning and development committee next week. The Chamber of Commerce, when they presented their report, we, councils seem to want time for a work session to talk about some of the changes that are underway and, you know, start thinking about what a contract may look like when that comes up for renewal, given the changes that are being discussed within the chamber. We also need to schedule a public hearing for the zoning definition change there in the B three, and we need thirty days to advertise that. So, Debbie Walker and I had talked about, there's a training scheduled for the new council members on August eleventh for MIMS, so since a lot of folks are going to be here already, that would be a time that we could probably have the hearing, if that's okay with folks. That would give us time to get it advertised.
Member Banks?
The community relations committee will be hosting the clean committee, I believe, right, Jim? And I'd like utilities meeting on Columbus Road, a few things, catch basin at Sunnyside and Lloyd, and the question about the pumps at University Courtyard, and the ultimate question about the pump at Summit, what that means. And fourth, I'd like to have somebody do something about the air handlers in this room, and especially when we have fifty people, as we did last Tuesday night. If this is the only handicap accessible venue for that number of people, I know we've done it before, but it's not working. It was very unpleasant in here. Luckily, everybody was into it, so I'd like to find out if there's some way, other than opening the doors and windows, that we could do something. But we can talk about that then.
Yes.
President, I'd like to schedule a meeting, a committee meeting for arts parks and recreation regarding the children's museum.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes, law group?
I have a request here from the Shade Tree Commission from Alvin and Collyons, and this is just concerning some new members and changing positions of a couple of members. So, I haven't brought this forward before, so if anyone needs to jump in and tell me protocol, we know, I'll just read what the changes are.
Is it proposed new members for the Shade Tree Commission?
Yes.
Usually, about all you do is read the names of, you have some other qualifications, go ahead and do that, and make a motion that they be accepted.
Okay, and members should have received a copy of this here, and it has resumes attached of the members. The first change will be Lee Gregg, who's been a very valuable member for over five years on the commission, she would like to move from a full commission member to an alternate. She's a botanist and has, like I said, has been very valuable on the committee. Taking her position as a full commission member would be David Sinkoff, who is currently an alternate, and he's also a botanist. Another change is that John Woodrow has stepped down from the committee, and he's been on there for many years, and again, he's been, he's been very good help to the commission. He will be replaced by a professor from the Department of Environment and Plant Biology, Jared DeForest. And the last change is John Katuski is, has been recommended to take Lee Gregg's position as an alternate on the committee. Anyone has any questions or anything on the resumes here?
Mayor Wild?
Okay, yeah, Mr. Woodward is basically out of town a lot, so he felt that he couldn't really do his full part for the tree commission. Dave Sinkoff has been helpful in terms of his expertise, and he, he's going to, as I say, a full membership. Actually, there's two alternates, one being Lee Gregg and John Katuski, then that's much replacement, but the two alternates. And again, you should have all the resumes in place.
Member Galsney, are you proposing those members as stated?
That's kind of from the--
Yes.
Greg Broadhurst, Granville Avenue. I am a certified ISA arborist, and I have concerns about appointments whereby, I'm not sure, was, was there a call for applications for this, for this commission? I don't remember if there was.
That's not always protocol.
Pardon?
That is something that is not always done.
Okay, I suggest that before approving any appointments to any commissions, that considerations be taken for any possibly conflicts of interest. Thank you.
If you know of any, please let, let us know. And you are proposing the members as stated?
I would, I just want, one of the qualifications for Mr. John Katuski that I forgot to mention is that his graduate work, some of his graduate work was in environmental management, and that's one of the reasons why he's been interested in that position.
Okay.
He's the only new person that's been welcomed to the commission, so I would like to propose those changes.
Okay. Is there further discussion on the tree commission proposal as stated? All those in favor of the changes in members' appointment as stated?
Aye.
Opposed? Wish him congratulations on our behalf.
Absolutely.
Is there any other committee meetings wishing to schedule?
I may want to reserve the right to have a transportation committee meeting next week.
Okay. And Jim, usually, the standing?
Hopefully, we can have, if we need to have a finance committee, we can have it committee night instead of meeting night.
Imagine that, okay.
Maybe both.
Okay. Were there any other announcements or other business that people wish to speak to? Onto an opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services that we did not cover on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone wishing to speak before council tonight? Mr. Broadhurst?
Again, Greg Broadhurst, fourteen Granville Avenue, Athens, Ohio. The fifteenth of April this year, I came to council about an issue in regards to land management and environmental impacts, having to do with user groups, specifically an issue with a user group basically operating the West State Street Park without any kind of revocable license, without any plan, and had presented the fact that in their development project down there, over time, as they were building up more ball fields, and Carter's got little pills, far as I can tell, a soccer field was relocated to West, to West State Street area, in a tentative location, I would say, as far as usability. And the same goes for activities on public lands that were acquired through grants and cooperative purchasing. On East State Street, where user groups are going in and doing so-called maintenance without supervision, including cutting trees on public land, dropping them, leaving the slash everywhere, you know, in the, in the, in the way of other trail users, specifically just to give preference for usability for one particular user group. So, I'm here tonight to say, and request city council, ask that all user groups that are working on, on city land, appear before city council and comply with O two oh oh. That's resolution O two oh oh, which, which is required as, as, since, oh, when I say O two oh oh, is required by resolution for any use of any land that's in the city jurisdiction. And that includes utilities, that includes basically all facilities. And also, the city council asked the recreation director to show up and state why this has been going on for, what, going on over, going on almost over a year now? So, I wanted to bring that up again. I know that the safety service director has been working in that direction, but I haven't heard anything more about it, and I think the law director should perhaps take a look at it as well, so that they, that these user groups, though they are an asset when, as far as cooperative resources in terms of our tight budgets in, in the recreation department, they need to be supervised, they need to come under the, under the regulations of the city in regards to land use. So, I just wanted to bring that up again, it's been since April fifteenth, and, you know, this is not, this is not, this is not good precedent, and the same thing would go for the situation at Southside Park. It's not that, that, you know, what people are doing is bad. In some situations, the, the land is being loved to death, you know, that kind of expression, and it can't be let go of anymore, because we're, we're losing resources. If you go out in the trails right now, you'll know what I'm talking about. And we need to conserve our public resources as well, and also, we need to see that people abide by the regulations set down by, you know, by the rule of law. They just can't go out and do whatever they want to do in city, on city lands. But I would, I would call attention to the recreation director to also do his job. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Broadhurst. Is there anyone else speaking, wishing to speak? Yes. Just a second, Mr. Hayes.
In response to Mr. Broadhurst's comments, I have met with these so-called user groups, and working out memorandums of understanding with them recently, and the law directors reviewed the most recent one, we have one in place for the Southside Put People First. The recreation director, as you know, was just appointed a few months ago, and he is coming on board in terms of gathering the groups together and having conversations. He's also been the last to know about the trails until we see it in the newspaper. So, we're pulling everyone together, we're well aware, and we also, as an administration, see the value of some of these volunteer groups and what they've been able to do. In response to the soccer field, we had a tremendous spring soccer season, and we anticipate having a very good fall season also.
Very good.
I just wanted to respond to that about the soccer fields. Before I got on council, before I was auditor, I was on the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, which was not arts, Parks and Recs yet, and we had talked and started the planning for moving the soccer fields. It has nothing to do with anybody and anything they're doing at West State at this time. That would have been at least seven years ago, just, so minor detail, but I just wanted everybody to know that the plan was to put those soccer fields down there a long time ago, it just takes a while.
Thank you. Mr. Hayes, if you could state your name and address, or if it brings your interest, and you have three minutes.
I'm Rick Hayes, and I was here last council meeting requesting what, what it would take to tie into an eight-inch sanitary sewer line, Helen State Route fifty-six. After that meeting, you know, it was, I guess, for the word that was used here, it was going to be sent up the ladder, up to administration.
Upstairs.
Upstairs. And we thought maybe we would take a proactive approach and try to organize a meeting. We assembled a, a meeting with the folks at Lee Axe Water, they was very well represented by Mr. Simpson, who's here this evening, he's the general manager of Lee Axe, Mr. Naisley, one of the board members, and Mr. Shaw, who is a board member of Lee Axe, a neighboring property owner of the proposed project, and an Athens township trustee. We had our civil engineer there, we had an architect that may be our architect of a, it's one of the, for the running to be an architect for this project. We had representatives from Holzer Hospital, not to be confused with Holzer Clinic, and we had representatives from the city, Andy Stone, Nick Carr, and Mr. Scott Lambert. The county was represented by Bob Eichenberg and Mike Canterbury. I think that the folks on council were all invited, we didn't have anyone from council attend, and we didn't have any, anyone else from the city attend, the mayor and the service safety director were invited as well. After the meeting, we, we offered to take folks to the site, to tour the site. This is a very beautiful site, that's about eighty-four acres. I think we confuse people, we said three hundred acres, because we just need, we've got a project in mind, and at the time, we said residential. I think that's been pretty common knowledge now, that that is for an assisted living project, like a very needed project with a very good partner. We haven't signed anything at all with the Holzer folks yet, but they are very interested in this area. I think we owe it to the, the people that has, you know, built this county and this city to have this kind of a project here. So, what we're asking for is permission to tap into the city sewer. We would be willing to, to consider annexation, put a road in that will meet the city specifications or the county. It'll probably be a private road, but we will build it in case, in case we ever want it taken over. So, you know, I don't know, I thought tonight, maybe we would have an answer on that. We gotta, you know, after this meeting, we, from emails and phone, trying to get phone calls through to get some answers, or see if there was any more questions. Matt Geiser, my realtor here with Larry Conrad, he spearheaded some of that, and last Thursday, July third, he called me, it's eleven twenty, he got a call about eleven twenty, there's going to be a council, or a planning commission meeting, it's going to be discussed about your request for a sanitary sewer line. So, I was eleven twenty, the meeting was at noon, so I think Matt was in Megs County or somewhere, and I was near MacArthur, so we broke the speed limit and everything, got back here and attended the meeting. We just, you know, if, it just needs some direction, I mean, what, is this something that the city wants to entertain? I mean, we think it's a good project, if it's not, we need to, you know, to look at our other options, but we don't want to, you know, obviously, don't want to waste you all's time, and we're on a fast track, you know, we'd like to get this thing, thing up and moving, we're not asking for any abatements, we're not asking for any grants, it's, you know, I think a stimulus package for this, for this whole area, for the jobs, it's gonna, you know, for the construction, for the, for the management and the running of the thing, I think it's just a, it's a great project, but I'd just like to have some direction or a yes or no, that's, that's, that's all I need. That's all I have.
Member Banks?
I'll put JB on the agenda. I told Matt today, when I talked to him, that I'd like him to go over every single point that we require by policy and bring in information. There are some other issues that I talked to Paula about later, and one of those would be the, would it be permissible, I'm not going to go over them now, I'll just give her a copy and send you guys a copy. But next week, as I told Matt, would be the time to do it, and come in with all your ducks in a row, so to speak, with meeting those things.
We have this with us tonight, Matt, come to me.
Well, and we can't do it now, I mean, because it's, we haven't declared that we're going to talk about it, and we have to declare that we're going to talk about it, so we will do that next time.
Thank you.
Can we invite the utilities commission? I mean, I know there's a proper procedure for going through--
We will need for you to come up and speak to the microphone, give your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Matt Geiser, Racine, Ohio. Can we request, or what's the formal process to extend an invitation to set up a meeting at the site, if the utilities commission would like to visit the job site, or if that's something they would like to see?
I think we'd all, I'm always a fan of field trips, but I'd like to go over the paperwork first.
Okay, so at the next, next meeting?
Yes. And if anybody wants to go, I'll drive. There's a threat.
Member Phillips?
Mr. President, I would just add, for folks who may not know, that we were counseled by the law director, that since the meeting wasn't a publicly announced meeting, and was stated to be a private meeting where the press wouldn't be able to attend, that we wouldn't be, we weren't really allowed to because of open meetings requirements for, for city council, so, I mean, I think folks are open to discussing it and hearing about the project, but the way it was set up, it was just something that we were really not able to participate in.
As I had mentioned in my email to you, Matt, I certainly do appreciate the sentiment of trying to invite council into the process and try to provide as much information as possible, I think that's a really positive thing. It's just that, you know, we'd gotten that email on, on a Friday, you know, talking about a meeting on a Monday, we just need a little more notice so that we can announce that to, to the media and to the public, in case they would want to be there for that as well.
Is that all true for administration as well?
No, that would just be for city council.
So, we will, next week, we will.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak before council this evening? Seeing none, and having only one other item on our agenda before adjournment, that being an executive session. an executive session, and the reason for this executive session is for council to discuss with its law director some pending and imminent litigation before the city. To go into executive session takes a roll call vote and a motion. May I have a motion?
So, we'll go into executive session.
To include?
To include.
The law director?
The law director, the mayor, the safety service director, the auditor, and city council members.
Sure, okay. Member Nysley?
Aye.
Gosney?
Aye.
Sands?
Aye.
Aye.
Here, here, aye.
Here, here, aye. It is 8:25, let's see if we can have the room cleared by 8:30. Thank you.